Alright, welcome. Do you please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no request to speak in open forum, but we have two presentations.
Awesome, two outstanding presentations, right? And opportunities for kids that we get to share out and get to see a little bit about what they have learned and gone through and experienced. So we'll start off with Mr. Waltz and a group of students from the Raymond's Skills Development Class.
Okay, so I just want to start out with an introduction. I have 15 students in my class, but three of them came tonight to share out their work with the Board of Education. And they did a really nice job this year in my Raymond class. I have 15 students. And this is our sixth year of having a partnership with Raymond. And every year we're tasked with the job of coming up with a holiday display. And this year's theme was Merry Moments. And they come up with different views every year. And they have to design and create and build basically about roughly, I'll say six or seven weeks by the first of November, a holiday display is put on display at the Roberson Museum. So today I have the kids, Masefa, Landon Roying, and Warner Sanders. So they're going to share what they did for as far as their work goes. And we're going to go over to the splice and see it a little bit more up close. They talked us through the parts and some of the skills that they learned and some of the things they had to discuss in a big round of class to come up with a slide. Alright, so everyone wants to just kind of head over? It's a little bit nicer to sit up close.
So we have a all metal fireplace. The only part that is not metal is this wood cup. And Katie is one of the stated, made a match everything else. But this is all paint. Landon worked very hard on the logs down there. Honestly, they look pretty real from standing far away. And then Katie painted with those flames. And then a lot of the guys in our Moses class made all these presents. And then the other female that is with us also made this tree. Me and Landon are the ones that put this together. I brought this up to Moses and put the rest of the touches together. I'm well with Moses for a year and a half now. And then Katie also worked very hard on the snowplains. I think they came out amazing. And then some of the 10 graders made the reindeer. Of course, they look a little goofy because Christmas is goofy. At first, we were going to do our little red truck. We were going to do a bigger red truck. And when you think of Christmas, you sometimes think of the red truck and the green truck that you always see because they're old fashioned and they're Christmasy. But I had asked the guys, how would we transport it? It's very heavy. We have to be able to disassemble it and transport it to a farther away place in just a van. I thought how Santa Claus comes down chiming. And I was like, oh my gosh, should we do a fireplace? It's Merry Moments, and it's different. So Katie and I put the final touches together, and we did measurements and everything else. And then everyone just kind of chose what they wanted to do. And push came to shove, and we got it all together. Honestly, it looks pretty dandy. Any questions on how this came to be?
Were there any complications during the design?
A couple of things that we definitely had to redo was we had to think about how we'd make this stand up, take it apart. So we have a box on the inside that actually pulls out. So you can carry the fireplace by itself and the box by itself. So it's less weight. And at first, I did a stroll. This was my own call. Is we couldn't fit the box into the fireplace because it was grinding down weirdly and not shaped well the way it's supposed to be. So me and one of the other students, Nate, we actually kind of just shoved it in there and got it in there as best as we could. And honestly, it looked pretty good. The only complications we really had was just the bigger fireplace itself, making sure it was level and square. Yeah, we definitely had a couple of complications.
How did you resolve it?
We gave them capital.
We kind of, I, we kind of did definitely argue for about like two, three days. We were like, oh gosh, like, how are we supposed to do that? And then Landon actually said that we should do a little truck. And I was like, oh my gosh. And then the guys are perfectly fine with getting the truck.
They made it portable, too?
Yeah.
That's how they.
Impossible. Really nice. Good job. Are we going to have this up for a while?
Yeah, we know that, yeah. And it was in the Roberson Museum down in Davidson for about a month and a half or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right before Thanksgiving and now last week, yeah.
And it's, I know Mr. Waltz and the class, Mr. Shannon, to go down to the Roberson Museum and see the holiday displays all set up. It's a really cool opportunity for them to get to see it and experience it in the public, be able to see it. So I know that I've had the pleasure of setting this up for six years. I don't want to be biased, but this is my part, I think. Yeah, so this is, I thought this was.
I think that would say that a second year.
No.
No.
I feel like we almost hit our own drive through Christmas. Holidays, seven holidays.
Very, very cool.
Yeah.
Very nice, actually. Next, we have our Team Institute presentation.
Yeah, so you approved the overnight for the Team Institute. And I know in years past, we have kids go back here and share their experiences. And like this year, we had a great group of kids that had the opportunity to attend Team Institute. And just like to introduce Mr. Yurka, the SAT advisor, health teacher, does a ton of personal fitness, strength, and conditioning. Mrs. Tanner, who is our 7th and 8th grade school counselor and the most important of the show tonight or in the presentation to students that were able to have a lesson impacted by Team Institute.
Awesome, so I'll start us off. So I just wanted to obviously introduce ourselves. I have some board members here that we've never met before. We have Mr. Yurka, John Yurka, and I help that teacher here, also SAT advisor. We've been doing this for, I don't even know. I've never called Mr. Bull and said, hey, I want to start a club, you know, that's really diverse and, you know, something that everyone wants to be a part of, that can do a lot of different things. So we kind of went through the book, and there was this thing called SAT. And I'm like, well, I don't really want to just see what SAT does. Like, well, we'll do the umbrella SAT. So we put the asset program, made a Sydney Center or Sydney Center to shuffle decisions. And Tanner just opened us up to, you know, what do we want to do this year, right? Every year absolutely looks different in our community in terms of what we want to change, what we want to work on in our school. We're really focused on character end, right? Being good human beings, being good people, making good choices. And then obviously pushing out to the community and obviously within our school in terms of helping people. So we do a lot of different, diverse things. The reason I really wanted to do this and bring this to you guys is people always give me a lot of credit. Like, yeah, you have 80 people in your club. Like, every year, how do you do this, right? But this is truly the engine, right? A lot of this comes from this conference. So I just wanted to share experiences they've had over the last time they have. And then more importantly, if you look at the bottom, it says 34 participants, returned youth staff. So a lot of kids actually go back and run the conference, which is really empowering and really cool to see. So let's share some of that. So real quickly, though, Ms. Tanner came with me this year, so she wanted to share her experience.
So again, I'm Clara Tanner. I'm the 7th, 8th school counselor this year. And I just wanted to first thank Mr. Yurka for inviting me to participate as one of the adult chaperones at Team Institute. Prior to starting at Sydney, I had not heard of Team Institute and wasn't really sure too much about it. But it is an incredible experience. And I wanted to thank all of the students, too, for letting me join on and jump right in with you guys. It was a really nice opportunity. I'm glad to have gotten to work with you guys. I feel like Team Institute is really a unique opportunity for students to develop personal resilience, leadership, and peer engagement skills. Within Team Institute, there's definitely a clear emphasis on fostering space to develop relationships within or with diverse peers from all over the heart of New York region. There are a lot of different schools, close by and far away, that students were able to meet other students, other adult staff. It was a great opportunity.
Okay, so my name is Zoe Brainerd. I was a participant this year. My TI experience was very much so not what I was expecting, but in a good way. It was very eye opening. There was plenty of opportunities to be experiencing new things. A lot of it was also very inspirational with the people and activities we did. At TI, you learn, like, one of the activities we did was what it means to actually be leader. So I learned what that is as well as vulnerability. But I also just learned how to adapt into a new environment and what it really means to have an open mind. Because as I said, it was very different than what I was expecting. In school, we can continue to teach and emphasize things like these adaptations in your life, as well as healthy ways you can adapt with your mental health and how to reach out for things like that. Personally, I would 100% recommend going to TI. I personally want to go back as a youth staff if I can accept it this next year.
I'm going to the world. I was also a participant this year. Learned a lot of good skills and valuable things. There was like many mental health, like, information about, what you can do, tell yourself, where you can go reach out for things. And to help other people to, like, really push me out of my comfort zone.
Hi, I'm Deja Taylor. This was my third TI conference. I was a participant in 2022, I think. And I went as a staff the past two years. All three years, it was an amazing experience. And that's why I keep going back. I absolutely love the opportunities and the environment that it creates and the positivity that spreads throughout. And overall, I would 100% recommend it to everyone.
Hi, my name is Michael Morrissey. I also went to TI. This is my second year going to TI. I went as a participant and a youth staff. So my TI experience was very different between the both. The participant year is very nice to like learn, meet new people, get out of your comfort zone. You kind of learn how to like adapt a lot better to different things and how other people, like, understand other people. As a youth staff, it was very nice to like be a leader and kind of run some of the stuff that you do for the participants. And it kind of shows you how important it is to work as a team to run like important operations. Some ways that we could promote like more people to get into TI is through social media. Social media is very like popular to get things out now. So if we can post more stuff about TI, we can get more people to go to TI through Sydney. And I would definitely recommend TI to everyone. It's a great opportunity to grow and learn more about yourself.
I'm Brady Lefton. I went as a participant last year. And I'm going to try to be a youth starter next year. But this year for TI, I thought it was really fun. I think it makes you like think about like yourself as a person. It like develops, like, it's like shows you how to develop as a human. And then, like, it just helps you be able to talk to other people about yourself, even if you don't really like normally feel like it. Like, even if you want to like hide away. Like, it's, it makes it easier to be able to talk to people. And like, the whole time, you're meeting new people and stuff. So like, you're telling them about yourself. So I feel like this is really, it makes it really easy to go and like expand on what you already know about yourself and kind of make you think about it in that way. I would recommend for other people to try to go because I think it's just a good experience overall. I think it's really like, I think it's a fun opportunity. You know, really get my child good.
Hi, I'm Addison Unger. And I was a participant this year at TI. Three words I would use to describe TI would be encouraging, positive, and uplifting. At TI, I discovered more about myself. I learned what it meant to be a leader, what my values are and why I value them. And lastly, I learned what it means to be vulnerable and being able to open up to people. Ways where you can bring the TI environment to our school is by teaching others what it means to be a leader and to take leadership in our community. Also, we can bring a more positive attitude to spread through the school. I would recommend TI to others because it is an amazing conference to experience and is a real eye opener.
Hi, I'm Kaitens. This is my, this is my second year going to TI. It was my first year as a youth staff. I would describe TI as inspiring, supportive, and welcoming. I learned how to stay in my comfort zone and how to improve my leadership. And overall, TI is just really good experience. Like, make yourself a better person and meet new people. We can bring TI back to our school by learning healthy ways to deal with stress and mental health and also just spreading a positive attitude throughout the school. And I would definitely recommend TI. It's a really great chance to get out of your comfort zone a little bit and meet new people.
I'm Dionne, and I was a first year participant this year, which really made me regret all the time Deja asked me to go. I didn't go. Which, three words I would describe would be, it was enlightening, educational, and social. The enlightening part, like, you really just got to learn how, like, you're not the only one feeling things. Everyone got to feel the same way. Educational was you got to learn how to be a leader, how to go through things, even as like you don't want to go through them. And the social aspect, you like made a lot of new friends. Even, it was the guy and girl ratio was not very, it was a different time. But, you know, you can still, you know, make connections, make friends. And I learned, you know, to be more vulnerable to people close to me, even though, you know, I don't always feel like opening up to everyone. And I was a skeptical at first. And me and Brady decided, you know, if you do it, I'll do it type thing. And, you know, we found it really fun and interesting. And I would recommend it to everyone to like make more connections and learn more about themselves.
Hi, I'm Abby Voice. This was my third TI conference. I've gone the last two years as a staff. I'm also the president of the SAT club. All of my TI experiences have been drastically different from each other in the best way. I learn more about myself every time I go. Speaking in front of a group like this used to make me want to vomit. And now it seems like not that big of a deal. I think TI brings a lot back to the SAT club as leaders. Like, all of the people that you see up here now run the club this year. It changes year to year based on who goes as participant and staff. But this is who makes things happen with the bigs and littles, our 5K, everything that we'll do from here is thanks to these people up here. Which is basically just spreading positivity throughout the club and then further through the school. Enabling other people to be leaders as well by encouraging them to either go to TI next year or getting their friends involved as an officer. TI is a great experience to anyone who can go. Like Dionne was saying, the guy and girl ratio wasn't really that great. There were four guys there, and they were all from Sydney. Three of them were friends. One of them was a couple of grades younger than them. But they wouldn't really socialize unless they went to TI together. And it's the same even with the girls. Like, the schools that we go with are from Syracuse. And then there's one that's by Finger Lee's. Like, none of these people would interact and accepted this conference, which is what makes it really special.
So, you know, when I think about these students before saying something like, hey, guys, I have a great idea. We're going to present on the Board of Education. What do you think, right? And of course, now they're like, yeah. So I'm like, really? You guys are youths. So, you know, I just, we want to bring this in for a brief to, you know, somebody who's heard about proof of it. It is a game changer in our program. And obviously, as a teacher and advisor, I'm trying to do here at the school and been doing for the past over 13 years. I think now we have a SAT program here. It's very powerful, and our kids are awesome. But when they're trained, they're very awesome. And they're very much, you know, empowered that they can actually do things at your school. So when you guys see things come up like, hey, we need help sending 25 kids to TI. Can you help us? It's definitely something worthwhile and something that we can just continue to support here. Because I think this was our ninth or 10th. Then we've had over 200. If you remember one year, we had a summit here with like 203 students here. It's been pretty powerful over the years. And our kids, as you, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. It's the same exact story. You know, probably the best things that ever happened.
The next couple of slides are just pictures of a lot of the different things we did. That metal picture up there, Deja is in a beaver costume.
Michael's a banana.
Michael's a banana. I think there's two more slides after that.
He's also the strongest kid in our school. So to put him in a banana costume?
Yeah. At TI, we have something we call stretch pants because we're going to make you do things that you probably really don't want to do. Like, we're going to sing at you and make you dance. And you're going to be like, you tell it. And by the end of the conference, you're going to think it's the most fun thing ever. And you're going to want to come and teach the kids at your school. So that's basically what this slide is just talking about, that it makes everybody a leader. And that's, that means different things to everybody. To me, it might mean talking to people like this. But to somebody else, it might mean doing something behind the scenes and putting the slideshow and other little things like that that make it all work. Yeah. The picture on the top left corner is all of the youth staff that went. And then the rest of them were workshops we got to do throughout the weekend.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mildly excited.
Yeah, no, that was wonderful. We, I, I loved it. Continue to do it. Alright, and we'll stick with Mr. Bull. I'd like to wish some updates.
I just want to, like I said, thank Mr. Waltz and the students from the wobbling class. It's nice to be able to drive and see the progression of the display that they do. They, they, again, as Mr. Waltz talked about, they have like, what, six, seven weeks to put this whole thing together from idea to generating the concept to the delivery at the Roberson Museum. And I just appreciate their creativity and their craftsmanship and the teamwork that goes in, right? There's obstacles, right? They work through them. But it's nice to be able to see that progression. And just, you know, thank Raymond for the opportunity. We've got to do this, but thank our kids for being creative and, you know, showing their crafts. And they really get into it, right? And then next is just thanking Mr. Yurka, Ms. Tanner, and the TI kids. That is the 10th year that our students have been able to participate in that leadership opportunity. And as Mr. Yurka mentioned at the end there, is it changes students' lives, right? It allows them to think differently. It allows them to have a positive impact on their leadership here back at school. And it's just a tremendous opportunity. I'm proud that they embrace that opportunity. And something that we're thankful to because there's the Sydney Alumni, sponsors, kids to be able to go. I think it's $250 per student that attends. And, you know, again, there's different groups that sponsor it. The Sydney Chamber of Commerce has sponsored it in the past. The Sydney Alumni has sponsored it in the past. Rotary sponsored it in the past. And it's just a great way to celebrate student leadership, so.
Is there always a group for everybody to go that wants to go? Or is there?
Well, it's got to the point where we used to send two or three, and then it just started to spread, right? And now we send more because the kids are going back as staff, or going as staff and then participants. Yeah, for the most part. I mean, we've never, we do like an application process to put some bonus in, right? Like, let's follow through with these types of things. Why do you want to go? And why do you want to go back as a staff member? And, but we've never denied the opportunity, right? It's an opportunity I think is really good for organizations to be able to support with that student leadership, so. But I just think it's really cool. Onto, I'll say other items, because that's pretty cool. That's why we do what we do here, right? And it just makes you proud of it. Let's talk about EV buses for a hot minute. Sorry. And I know I mentioned this last night, but I just want to make sure we're staying looped. And anytime that we could provide some sort of education to the community, right? To be able to answer questions or to be able to make any points more clear. Or if you're hearing things about, wow, we heard it's twice as much money as ever a bus, right? These buses, right? It's important, education is key. So we have another opportunity to learn a little bit more about electric buses. We're going to set it up for the night of the board meeting, Wednesday, April 16. So we'll kind of do a few different groups. Is from 3:30 to 6:00, Leonard's Bus is going to bring another EV bus on campus. We're in the process of definitely a large bus that we've had on campus during open houses, but also potentially a smaller bus, like a 30-passenger bus that we may be able to get on campus and be able to see as well. And the purpose that will be for our drivers to drive it, right? See it, they've seen them already. But when they come back from the runs, be able to jump on and again, ask questions. They open up to the community. It'll be up at the bus garage. We can put out a lift, we can show it off. And then also for yourselves, right? If we get here early, I'd love to have you be able to go, take a look at it, see it. You didn't get an opportunity to do it in open house, to go for a ride. And the idea of that is to have our bus drivers drive it because they're going to be the words on the street, right? People ask me, hey, listen, you ever drive one of those? Yeah, I've driven one. Yep, I've been out, right? It's a big yellow bus that's just by, right? And it runs off battery instead of diesel. Right, to be able to control some of the answers, right? From the practitioners that will be using it. Same with the board members is, you know, that night is asking you to get here early, right? Take a look at it if you want to. Again, to learn more about, well, to see, to learn more about, and then to go for a ride for it. And I think it's also important to know, and I know I mentioned this last night, but is Sydney, because we're high needs and rural, right? We qualify for a $196,000 rebate per bus, right? Per bus. And we've also qualified for $65,000 per charger, which will include the installation of that charger. So try to just educate you, just to provide opportunities. So if there's more that we can do to share that information, to provide opportunities to learn more about or see, just let me know and, you know, we'll make sure that we make that happen. But right now, we've already confirmed. So Wednesday, April 16. Again, I'll send more information out about that because we just got confirmation, I think it was yesterday, that the buses are available. And remember, that will be a separate proposition. When we go to do our main vote, we'll have our budget, right? It's a proposition, and then we'll have the EV bus. We were approved for up to two buses, right? For the grant. Whether we do two large buses, we do a large bus and a small bus. We're trying to figure that kind of stuff out to see what, what, what do we want to practice with, if you will? These are going to be, not take the place of our diesel buses. They're going to be supplemental to experiment on different runs, right? See what works, different conditions. Collect a bunch of data on it to be able to make better decisions See what works, different conditions, collect a bunch of data on it, uh to be able to make uh better decisions as we as we move forward into that transition. So again, I just want to make sure you share that and if you, there's other opportunities to to help educate, share that information. Are we, are we still, we can buy diesel buses up till twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-seven? Yeah, so we'll we'll, I can't remember off the top of my head right now, but we have two buses in for this year's budget. We'll build right into the general fund. Um, it will continue with our fleet replacement this year and next years. Um, which will get our diesel, but our diesel fleet will be good all the way for another twelve years until the entire fleet has to switch over to that one, so.
Because I know that's what we talked about, is buy as many as we can to have them as as current as we can.
Yep.
And then, you know, as we move the EVs in, you know, we'll have to see how long they, you know, especially like sports runs, stuff like that, how they do, um, and cold and hot.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information we'll collect over the next number of years for that, right? And I think that's good, at least to to get one or two on campus and start collecting it, what's working, what runs. On paper, we know there's only one run right now that uh an EV bus won't work on, right? But it's a way that the run is designed right now, right? There's no reason why we couldn't change that, right? Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's it's a good opportunity to learn a little bit more, let our drivers drive it, let our mechanics work on it, um, let our kids ride it and just collect more information out.
What's the difference in price between a a larger and a smaller EV bus and how does a grant money change?
Yeah, good question. Uh, we didn't get to quote back to the small bus that are relatively new right now. Um, the grant money, I use a a large bus, for example, about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right? Uh, a large bus is, but minus a hundred and ninety-six thousand, so it's about two hundred thousand, right? For the bus where a diesel bus is gonna run you about a one eighty-five, one eighty-six right now. So I'm looking for confirmation, just to make sure my number is right. Um, so it it's a little bit more, but I mean, they they pretty much created the rebate to make it wash, right? With your diesel bus by the time you get all your extra things put in, right? That you'll add in from your radios to your, whatever your New York State uh required uh safety things are. So your stop arm cameras or all this stuff. So, yeah, I mean, it's it's not that much different when you're really talking about um the cost of a bus and being able to get back ninety percent aid on your transportation aid on it, right? And so it's not, it's not significant, right? Uh, because City Central School District gets that ninety percent aid on all transportation related costs. You spend it out and you get that ninety cents, right? So the cost of the bus over the eight years is not really substantial, right? When you're looking back at your aid. And you get that back in building a, right, in your, or I'm sorry, in your transportation aid. Um, with your state aid runs, you'll see that, like usually we're around like four point one to one point three million, something like that comes back in. But your transportation expenses are in those, any bus purchases or van purchases or all that kind of stuff. But I don't know, we we haven't got a quote from the small bus yet. We're, I was hoping to have it ready for tonight to be able to share that, but we didn't get it back yet.
But you know the grant amount or no?
Yeah, the grant amount is a hundred and ninety-six thousand per bus.
Whether it's big or small?
My understanding, yep.
It's kind of pretty small.
Some logic there. Uh, but that's why we're experimenting, like, do we want to do two large buses, a large, small, right? We'll work with the transportation department, see like what they want to play around and what they want to do, so.
And when the technology changes, we were saying that a couple of years ago at the conference, that some people had jumped on it really quickly and were just getting the buses. But we knew the technology would change, like grant programs would change, and so by the time we have to change our fleet over, hopefully.
And I like, I like the timeline, I like the timeline that we've done. We we, you know, smarten your homework, make sure that people are well educated. We're not rushing into anything, making sure that, you know, we have the right infrastructure. We have enough power in the transportation center right now for two chargers. Um, we have to do some, you know, simple electrical work to be able to put the charger boxes in, right? Running out, you know, kind of do it off your power boxes, but um it it's, it has the capability, it has the capacity to be ready for it, right? So just making sure you do things thoughtfully, right? And just, well, like you, like you, you know, you guys talked about in the previous meeting, batteries are gonna get better every year.
You know, the capacity, the range, you know, all that stuff continues to increase as they, as the, you know, technology matures. So the longer we can wait, you know, without putting ourselves behind the training.
Oh, the one thing too is um, just in case there was like some people say, well, when do we get the bus? Well, we can't even order the bus until uh you have an approved proposition. So the vote has to pass before you can leave or you can't do a letter of intent, like a diesel bus. We've already done a letter of intent to get in line for a diesel bus, right? So you, because, right, they're expensive, right? There's unpredictability with it. So most companies, uh, you can't even get in line to order one until you have an approved proposition, right? So once it's approved, right, the vote, then we'll, you know, submit that the next day, so and then you're in line. So it takes about a year or so. Um, next thing, any other questions? Good questions, right? And the more, like I said, we can educate the community and and people have the right information. So if you hear things, point in my direction and we'll just continue to provide the opportunities for people to learn. Um, this week, uh, actually Thursday, uh, January sixteenth from six to seven thirty, the Sydney Elementary School is going to host the Second Family Engagement Night, similar to last year. This is a celebration of culture and diversity and the traditions that make our community um great. So uh, again, I don't know, uh, you know, Rob, Sean, if you want to say anything more about that, but it's a, again, awesome opportunity where we open up our our school uh to learn about the uh and appreciate the cultures um that make our our community diverse and and great, so.
I would just say that this year we have uh nine different countries that are being represented. And uh, we also opened up to the community. We did not um see anybody involved this year from the community, but that was one of those steps that we wanted to take this year. So we made sure to put information out and give them the opportunity um so that anyone had something that they wanted to present or that they had knowledge about, um, we did that, so. I'm really excited about it. Our counselors do a good job of organizing it all. Here, three Thursday night. We'll see you there.
Awesome, thanks. Um, another leadership opportunity, our Sydney FFA chapter is hosting. If you remember, they presented during the uh last month, the District Four FFA Leadership Development Contest. Uh, it's Saturday, January twenty-fifth, starts at nine o'clock. If you're interested in being a judge, let me know. Um, and I think it's about from eight to one, the responsibilities of judges are, if it's something you're interested in, just just let me know. Um, next month, um, I gave a little snapshot in the last week's update just on the investment plan. Um, I just want to thank Amy uh for for organizing and doing a lot of the legwork with that. And I think it's moving in the right direction. If you remember, we presented this back in October. Um, and uh, gave a quick little snapshot, so we'll do a more of a formal presentation in February. Just to show where we're at in the month of February in regards to that, so. But all over, all in all, like, uh, I think it's a, it's been a a neat project. I think it's been a rewarding project in a lot of different ways. So I'm excited to uh see where that goes. And then the last, I just wanted to see if there was any other questions about the, I just sent some information out the last couple of weeks on the Capitol Outlay Project with the signage. Um, so it's it's really gonna be new signage across the district. If you walk the campus, oh, you'll know what I mean, right? They're just various signs and various poles. So this will be uniformed across the district from speed limits to stop signs to crosswalk signs. Um, to welcoming signs, to the district seal sign, right? Uh, the seal is in like uh the the formal uh S with the city school district on it. Um, so we'll do a um cooperative purchase through the um TACCO Sign Company, right? To be able to purchase the equipment and then we'll either do a co-op to install or we'll bid it in the spring. But we're looking to do the installation for that over spring break, so that will be all all set and ready to go for like the spring season, so. That's Andy O'Bound and Kate Rush. I feel like we're getting a lot of anger, but like I'm a son of Kate.
Is the brick sign being replaced?
And the front, the brick sign itself is not gonna be replaced. There's gonna be a, yup, there's gonna be a front and back, but with a city central seal that says welcome to uh the city junior senior school.
And the banners look really nice. Are are you doing just the the circle out front here or are you doing a little bit?
In front of the gym. All the way to the stadium, parking lot, um, the new parking lot, yup, so all those poles will have like.
They're really nice.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I had is, is there any um, like, is there a cap on how much interest we can earn and the money we invested? Uh, because we're doing really well and I and I just wonder if there's a a cap that you can't have more than this much in interest.
So the money has to go back, appropriated back into the accounts that it came from, right? Um, and no, to answer your question, not really. Um, we may have to distribute some of the money that's in there, uh, because like when you look at like your EBLR, you could have your recommended X amount of dollars based on your compensated absences with your with your staff. Um, so you might have to shift some money around in there, right? Um, but like uh your capital reserve, if we got to the point where I think it's a ten million dollar capital reserve, if we hit that, which we're not going to, but like if you did, you've just started another capital reserve and then put the money into another capital reserve. So, no, teacher, we're not gonna lose it, right? You just put it back where it's at and we just might have to shift some of those things around. But it's, yeah, I mean, for the first, what, sixty days, it's uh, it's good.
Yeah, yup. I mean, and looking at it forecasted, it was over a hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's that's a lot.
Well, I think that, and again, I'll get into more detail next month, right? Um, just kind of wrapping ahead on it, but I think I put in the update is just in the um, the line that we put in there for to offset the tax levy account or the tax levy increase, right? I think we're like three percent already, right? I mean, that's pretty substantial, right? And uh, when you when you start to quantify it, that's right.
Yeah, that's great.
It's a lot of work, so I just thank Amy for for the work that she's doing with this and um, the uh, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a neat project.
Any other questions, Mr. Bull? Thank you very much. All right. Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the regular board of education meeting held on December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the FFA Winter Camp Weekend at the Oswego Chi Educational Center, February twenty-eighth through March second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just another great opportunity for kids that are moving. Mr. Waltz had been taking kids up there for for years in the summer camps and the winter camp. And again, just a neat opportunity. I remember doing it as a kid, right? Great, great leadership opportunity, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the ROC to negotiate data privacy agreements, DPAs, with vendors and third-party contractors on its behalf.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I kind of explained it um just in the update, just if there was any questions. So this is really the RIC, uh, which is Regional Information Center that um is like the data warehouse, if you will, for a lot of school districts and a lot of OSIs. And it's a, just allows them to negotiate uh ed law two D compliance agreements with uh technology vendors. So instead of individual districts doing it, they do a course.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Board member hands. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for doing a photo at the beginning. I appreciate it. Just let me know when you get the actual one.